We want to keep people here, Tom.
Okay, so I don't see anybody out in the hall. I'll go ahead and get started then. Call the meeting to order. This is the regular December 19th meeting of the St. Charles County Council. We will start with an invocation from Carissa Figgins from the Harvester Christian Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Dave Hammond. Thank you for being here. For everyone, but please stand and remove your hats, please, gentlemen.
If you're comfortable, please bow your heads with me. "Hey God, we are so thankful for St. Charles County and the leaders that you have provided. We are mindful of the service of Mr. Cronin and Mr. White. Please continue to guide them in their next season of service after tonight. We're thankful for these seasons to reflect on all things of this world that are honest and admirable, praiseworthy, lovely, and good. Father God, in the season of Advent, we reflect on the world was changed for good forever through the birth of your Son. Thousands of years ago, this precious baby taught us to lean into inconveniences. Babies like him taught us kindness and gentleness and to seek peace and quiet. Babies bring a whole new level of love and understanding to our lives. Babies teach us to seek counsel. Lord, tonight continue to teach us to look to you for wisdom and knowledge. Lord, teach us to seek inconveniences as divine interventions from you. Lord, teach us a whole new level of kindness and gentleness. Teach us how to bring peace to every neighbor and above all, teach us to love like you. And it's in your son's name that we pray. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the roll call, please.
Councilman Cronin, Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda to move the resolution on the hero award up in front.
That's 2214. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, Mr. Brazel, you're going to emcee this event, I think?
Well, Donna.
Read the title.
We're going to read the resolution first and then...
Yes, of course. Resolution number 2214, sponsored by councils as a whole. A resolution designating certain volunteers and organizations each as a St. Charles County Council hero, honoring exemplary residents officially. Whereas the St. Charles County Council wishes to acknowledge citizens and organizations that demonstrate exceptional caring, generosity, and thoughtfulness through their contributions to lifting the human spirit while neither acting in the capacity of an appointed board member, candidate, or elected official, nor receiving compensation for their public-spirited actions. And whereas the designation of hero by the St. Charles County Council serves to publicly honor such individuals and organizations. And whereas on December 10th, 2021, at around 7:00 PM, Defiance was hit by a tornado which caused widespread devastation, including the destruction of approximately 14 homes, many outbuildings, and which resulted in one fatality. And whereas that evening and in the following days, up to 100 first responders and volunteers, both residents and organizations, worked into the morning rescuing people, saving horses and livestock, clearing roads, removing trees, and pulling barns out of trees and across fields. And whereas the individuals and organizations below each exemplify the definition of hero in performing these acts of service. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County Missouri as follows. Section 1, the designation of hero by the St. Charles County Council is hereby given to Jen Hamm, Tom Shaw Jr., Tony and Karen Frisella, Kel Brazel, John Stevens, Dave and Stephanie Muley, Dr. and Mr. Deveraux, Dr. Baxter, Dr. Ellis, Dr. Murad, Dr. Hoover, Joel Ellis, Wildshoots Brothers Incorporated, Angela Stevens, Crossroads Construction, Howland Sons Excavating, Karen Brock Construction, TD Ward, Red Sauset, Augusta Volunteer Fire Department, St. Paul United Church of Christ, Daniel Boone 4H, and the Lake St. Louis Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Thank you all for coming in today. This is an award we've been thinking about for quite some time, but we wanted to find the right time to do it. So since this is the year anniversary of the tornado, we thought it'd be a good time and the Christmas season, honoring good people doing good things. The rolling pictures are all the pictures that I was taking pictures and Chief Casey from Numali sent some pictures in. So those are just rolling pictures. We realize that there are a lot of people who helped with the volunteerism. We understand that we can't name everybody what the goal was. We had sign-up sheets and we tried to get folks who did, who worked like multiple days, two days, three days, full days, working, doing physical labor, helping people, helping livestock, helping horses. And so that's how we came to notoriety of all the heroes in this county. If we didn't have people like you in this county, we wouldn't have such a great county that we have. I'm going to try to tell a story. Everyone's going to have a story for that night, everyone who was there. But I'll tell a story and once you come up here, we got four groups. It's kind of staged the way the tornado and the events went, so that's how we broke it up. We'll call up the names and we'll do the, we'll give you your awards and we'll tell a small story of that group. And then we'll just line everybody in front here and then when we get all the awards out, the council will stand up and we'll just take a picture of everybody. That's the goal for tonight. That night of the tornado, the signs were going off and Captain Hunt, he's not here. I called him and I said, "Chris, they were playing bingo in the brewery next to our house that we're staying in, renting while we're up building the house down the road a little bit." And I could hear him going, "D7," the tornado signs were blaring. And so I go, "Chris," I go, "Is this serious?" Because you know, we're so used to tornado signs going off. You just don't really pay attention. And so he said, "Joe, it's coming out of Buford. This is serious." So I ran over there, told everyone to hunker down in the brew. I go, "You guys got to hunker down." And then me and my wife Kelly, we grabbed the kids, went down and did a, it was like a Daniel, or like one of those Wizard of Oz. You know, you open the thing and you go down under the end of the cellar. We went in there, the storm blew through. It didn't seem real bad. Some branches and stuff broken in the center of town. But then we started getting all these texts on Facebooks and everything about redlining lane, all the different houses getting tore down. And so we'll start with that night. I'd like to recognize Tony and Karen Frisella. Are they here yet, Tony? Well, you can come up then. And then Kel Brazel, come on up here, guys. And then the Augusta Volunteer Fire Department, you guys and you guys coming up. And then just standing here and then Clark, can you hand them out to this group here? On that night, we, I was standing at Highway F, me and Kel were standing at Highway F in the Fiennes Road. We went up there, we turned our kids loose back to the neighbor's house. And we're standing there trying to, we got in our truck, drove to the Fiennes Road and I F and it was chaotic because the Daniel Boone Christmas light thing just let out and all the roads are clogged with trees and everything. So Tony Frisella Senior comes walking over the hill with his wife and they couldn't get through because the roads are blocked and whatnot. It's storming, tornado signs are going off. And so what we did is we just, Kelly and Karen and his mom and dad jumped in the truck. We went down to his nursery and the windows were all blown out of it. Plants were everywhere, but there was nothing they could do with it at that time. So we jumped in, him and I jumped into skidsters and we were pushing the trees out of the way on Highway 94 to get clear for the, and the fire department. These guys, they were behind, my wife and Karen were driving pickups and the fire trucks were behind us with all the lights. And so we're going down there, getting all the trees out of the way. And then, and then we turned around, we got most of that done and you guys said, "We got to go back." Augusta called us to go to the MJ's barn. Okay, and so you guys want, and I'm going to go to the vets now. But then we drove all the way to MJ's barn and all these horses were trapped. But there was chaos going everywhere, right Jen? Yeah, everywhere. And everybody was doing everything they could to help. Do you guys have anything you want to say at this point? And then you can line up over there and I'm going to go to the next group.
I just think that you showed great leadership that night. And it got a started, it got started faster than probably what it would, would have.
And you coordinated everything through the week.
Well, thank you, yeah.
Absolutely. I'd also say, like, I've never seen anything like that in my life. You see it on TV all the time, but until it's in your own backyard. Like, my family's, like, life and blood is in that garden center. And the amount of all support that we had from the community and plus the first responders that hosted their facilities or were just responsible to that place. The community overwhelmingly was one of the most impressive things because they actually started turning away donations of food and everything else. And so I commend everybody that was in this room that donated, plus everybody that was in the county out that way. It was one of the most amazing things ever.
There's Tom, come on, see him. He was the one, we were doing the skidster work on getting roads clear.
He wore that f at night.
All right, hey guys, started this in over here. And then the next group is the veterinarians, Dave and Steph, Dave and Stephanie Muley. Come on up here, guys. I saw you walk in. Dr. and Nick Deveraux, Dr. Baxter, Dr. Ellis, Dr. Murad, Dr. Hoover, and Joe Ellis. You guys come up here?
I'm the representative of the whole Mid Rivers.
You're doing the whole Mid Rivers Equine Center? So we went up to the barn that night, me and Tony and with the Augusta Fire Department to get the, the horses were all trapped. Dave, you want to tell the story up there? You were up there the whole night. Me, Frisella, my wife, we were there till, what, 2:00 in the morning, getting the horses out. Nick, you want to talk about it or?
Joe grabbed the hand mic right there.
Sure.
I don't yet turn it on.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so I guess for us, we were finishing up dinner. We had family and guests in from Germany and we were in the basement and it was blowing through and the power went out and I was like, "Okay, well, this might be serious." And we were watching all the lightning come in. It was incredible. And then I just remember that when it kind of blew over, we went outside and we could hear chainsaws in the distance and I was like, "Oh, boy." So we might want to go down and check on the horses. So we went down there and saw someone else's barn up against our barn and we got down and there was no fence left and all the horses were like open to the highway and lightning flashed and my wife looked over at me and she said, "Oh, my God, the neighbor's houses." And I was like, "Which house?" I'm looking at the one in front of us and then I looked to the left and she's like, "All of them, they're gone." And I was just like, "Oh, my gosh." And so went running over there and couldn't believe I found Vernon sitting on a mattress. His wife, God bless her, she didn't make it, but she was, she was there and she was still with us at the time and she was still in her bed sheets. But anyway, I'd like to just take a moment for Ollie and, you know, a moment of silence for her. And so after that, then we went down the road and I couldn't believe that we saw, oh, and them. They're actually the ones.
Their horses at our place.
Their horses at our place. And they actually were like, "Hey, there's actually a tornado coming." And that's why we were down there, so thankfully. But they got in the car and they had everything, the generators and everything packed up and chainsaws and they went around the emergency crews and she was running down the road and she got emergency crews and told them, "We've got some people that are in bad shape." So then after we got everything squared away, we went down the road and we saw MJ's place and, oh my gosh, it was just crazy night until 4:00 in the morning. So anyway, anyone else?
Well, thank you, guys. Hey Paul, how many horses? Did you save? Three?
We saved, well, we took, yeah, we got four out and then one or two were at the barn that we ended up having to, yeah, so three made it, yeah.
You can't touch it.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. And so, so then after the barn, they got, they saved, we were there till we got the horses out. They got the horses out. The vets were making them calm, giving them drugs so they wouldn't overreact when they're pinned. And then the next morning, meanwhile, we got home about 2:00 or so in the morning and they were still, you guys were still doing your vet stuff too, I guess. And the next morning, we, you get up and me and, me and John Greifew, who was a great help with the county and Steve and Joe, and we organized with the Frisellas, put up a command post, moved it from F94 to Frisella Nursery. And then when in the morning, you just saw how devastating everything was. And so that morning, we were going around just getting, helping people with all the local volunteers, getting their personal belongings in the fields and stuff because you just, that's how personal it was. You don't want just people coming up. There were a lot of people offering to help, but the folks who lived there just preferred local people because they didn't know what was out in the fields, all their personal stuff. So we're gathering that all up. And then, you know, we did that all day on Saturday and then it was just exhausting. So the next, that day, we put out a text for volunteers with equipment to just help. What I didn't realize is insurance companies do not pay for, if a tree doesn't hit your structure, it doesn't cover it. If a barn, that car right there, I'll tell you about that in a minute. That was Mr. Vance's right there. And that was his place too. The, if a barn ends up in, if, whenever a barn blows apart, and there were barns, every person had a barn, there were barn material everywhere. Insurance company doesn't cover that either. They don't cover trees, they don't cover any. There was a, Mr. Vance, there was a house, Boardman's House landed in Vance's property. They don't cover that because it's not their house. So there's so much to do that you couldn't, it's just so overwhelming. You don't, I always thought, I never knew that, "Oh, well, insurance is going to cover that. They can handle it." It's not like that. It was just a mess everywhere. And so we sent out a text on, on that night, Saturday afternoon, to all the local contractors and so forth. And then on Sunday morning, we said, "Everyone show up at 9:00." We had an overwhelming response. We had over 20 pieces of equipment, track hose, bobcats, skidsters, dump trucks, everyone just showed up to volunteer. And so that group I would like to introduce is, is anyone from Wildshoots Brother? Wildshoots Brother, Lauren, you out here? No, Lauren, Crossroads Construction, Howland Sons Excavating, Wanda, you want to come up? Wanda Howe, Karen Brock Construction, yeah, you want to come up? And then TD Ward, is TD Ward here? You guys come up? And then Red, is Red here? No? And then is John Stevens here? So all these folks showed up with their equipment for days cleaning stuff up. And the county had, Chris was doing his job and said, "Make sure you keep receipts and all that stuff you need to do to collect this. You got to get to a certain level to make it a certain category of catastrophe." And I mentioned that to these, some of these folks and they're like, "I'm not going to turn in any receipts. We're doing this because it's the right thing to do." And that's how everybody felt. They didn't want nothing. They just wanted to help. So without all these equipment out there, they, we were, there were folks out there for, for a week cleaning stuff up. And then we had so, so much stuff to do, so much stuff to clean up, so many trees and stuff. We organized, Jen Hamm, you want to come up? Where's Jen Hamm? Jen Hamm, Tom Shaw, Angela Stevens, St. Paul, UCC Church. Oh, Wanda, you're there. The Daniel Boone 4H, Mary. The Lake St. Louis Stake of Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. You guys, Caleb, you guys? So these folks here, we set, Tommy and Jen set up a tent at F94 and that's where all the volunteers would come. And then we had 4H folks, we had the gun club, we had the, this church. You guys had hundreds of volunteers. Wanda's church, St. Paul and Defiance had hundreds of volunteers. So without this group of people, it would have never came together the way it did. And so for that, I'm thankful for that. I'm just telling you what a great community that we live in. And it was, this was one of the most gratifying things, not the tornado, but the help that we got that I've had in my career as a county councilman. It was unbelievable. And I want to thank you all. Does anybody have, do you have anything you guys want to say?
I don't know that we consider ourselves heroes, but we feel like neighbors and grateful for all the neighbors that pitched in in this situation. And I was just thinking before that we came up here that one of the great opportunities was, it was at Christmas time, right? Holidays were coming and we had a lot of our youth, our teenagers involved. And I think that's a great thing for them to come and see that, you know, things can disappear quickly, but what's most important is taking care of each other and loving each other. So grateful to the local congregation, all the work that they did to make it happen. And John Brown was a leader in that effort, so thank you, John. And he lives close by and was letting us know how we could help and it was a pleasure to be a part of that. Anything you want to add, John?
I just want to say real quick, I called the council and we couldn't add you as a member of this because that day, Joe, you were the top leader in all. So your community of Defiance, we created our own award of appreciation for you because you were the true hero that day.
It was incredible how many people were donating stuff too. The firehouse, the Defiance Firehouse was full. Your church had a lot of stuff in it. Numali, your fire, and there were, everybody was a hero. Dan Casey with Numali Fire Department, Lake St. Louis, Cowanville, all the police. You guys all did a great job and so we're proud to be in that community.
And one other thing too, we got to thank Chief Sergeant, I told you I was going to screw that up. You've got a great group of brown shirts working out there. They have fantastic job. Make sure remember me giving you guys a compliment too.
And I would like to say, John Greifew with the county and also Scott Lewis, he was out there working with his gloves on. And Captain Hunt, they were there every day helping people. So the county, John, you guys did a great job. So I'd like to thank everybody. Thank you so very much. Yeah, some of the, some folks you get up here behind the council if you want. Is that, Mary, is that good enough?
Not really.
These guys are really helped out.
Say Tommy. They all say brass nuts.
Thank you all.
You are all free to leave if you like or you can stay and watch the rest of our thrilling meeting. But if you have things to do, you certainly would and will need to. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, we do have to read it again and call, I think it's going to pass. Okay. All right, Donna.
Resolution number 2214, a resolution designating certain volunteers and organizations each as a St. Charles County Council hero, honoring exemplary residents officially. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
And the resolution is approved. Okay. Next item then on the agenda is a conditional use permit bill for final passage, Bill number 5123-CUP22-12.
Bill number 5123, in ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP22-12 for a daycare serving no more than five children at any given time to the Sparrow's Nest property owners.
All right, thank you. We had a hearing last time and so if you'll just read the title and call the roll.
Bill number 5123, in ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP22-12 for a daycare serving no more than five children at any given time to the Sparrow's Nest property owners. Councilman Cronin, Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
The bill passes. Next on the agenda is public comments. If you filled out a card, your name will be called and you can come up to the podium. The timer there will tell you when your three minutes have expired. David Reagan.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. That's kind of a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. I addressed you all last time on behalf of Department of Corrections and a couple of issues came up at that meeting that we'd like to address. Some of you all said you didn't want to burden future councils with the proposed pay plan, putting it into ordinance. It seems to me, guys, you do it all the time. Every time you pass a budget, you're giving a future council a budgetary obligation. For example, the DOC facility. Originally, that was supposed to be $95 million. That's not fiscally feasible to do all at one time. So last year, you did part of it. You did the sky bridge, you did booking. You got a plan now for next year. You're going to do 25 million more. So somewhere in the future, a future council is going to have to budget about, what, 50 million? To finish those renovations. So you can't say you don't do it. You do. You do it all the time. We're asking you put that pay plan into ordinance and that's going to ensure that these guys get their pay raise every year. And it will be up to those future councils to figure out the budget to make it fit. You do it all the time, guys. Okay? Also, some of you said in previous years, well, y'all point to Bob and you say when he was on the council, he's the one who changed the revenue stream to sales tax revenue for all of you. And you kind of take jabs at him that, "Oh, it's his fault that this happens this way." That you got, what, 60 to 62% of your revenues coming from sales tax. And you all even pointed out, I think it was 2008 to maybe 2010, it was rough times. There was talk of cutting services, cutting staff. Now, the next time there's a recession, which is still possible, that proposed pay plan is going to go out the window unless you put it into an ordinance. And we're asking that if you think that the sales tax generating revenue is the wrong way to go and you keep, you know, year after year, you keep pointing at Bob and saying that was the wrong thing, you're the council. Do something about it. Make the change back. Okay? You can't expect someone else to do it. You can't keep going year after year and keep saying, "Well, we'll fix it next year" or expect a different outcome. Expecting a different outcome when you're doing the same thing year after year is just, that's the definition of insanity. Okay? Also, there was talk that possibly Prop P may come up on the April ballot. That's great. We look forward to it. If it's done though, we want it done right. St. Louis County did it wrong. We think you guys can learn from it, write it properly so that the money from that is only going to first responders. Corrections, police, sheriff, dispatch.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? Thank you for your time.
Arne Deenoff.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, county public advocate. Uh, the first issue I'd like to go through is, um, this council really for the next year needs to address extending the time limit. It's really hard for three minutes to get through everything on the agenda that's very important to my heart in our county. I also asked if we put an ADA door with the handicap accessible paddles so the door opens automatically for the disabled. It's not in compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, I made a request before this meeting to the county registrar and the county director of health, Evers, uh, to look at the, um, uh, public records that she wants to destroy from the Department of Public Health. There are seven lines of record destruction requests from the Department of Public Health dated December 1st of this year. So I'd like to look at those before they're destroyed, and I made that request under law. Uh, I want to get into the budget. Um, county council member salary, I want you to freeze it, not increase it, because it's not about you making your pockets more inflated, but it's about serving the people. Uh, nix the medical benefits that all of you receive or can receive or eligible. And the county elected official salary, an average of $45,000 increase from the administrators to my right and all the elected officials who are full time. Recorder of deeds, director of elections, sheriff, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, look at the police package agreement in O'Fallon. We're going to lose a lot of police officers to O'Fallon because they're going to be the top dog in the county in terms of pay. Fire the county lobbyists. Um, right here, we have an executive, Charles Gibbons, that works with the county executive as lobbyist. Tom Dempsey working for roads and bridges and transportation. This is over $250,000 with salary and benefits that we're paying these people. And it's ridiculous because there's no reports, no transparency, no return on investment, nothing but secrets when I ask for any information about the lobbyists. So I ask that you not renew their contracts, that you vote down that bill. Now, Chris Hunt has decided to run for public office. Uh, he's a big shot over in our police department. I'm asking for a county investigation of the county counselor and county auditor, uh, inconvinced felon, then reversed, uh, to the guilty of two misdemeanors, a settlement of the county demand for violating his civil rights. He is my opponent on the O'Fallon City Council. He was promoted from officer to captain in six months. And does this county charter allow Chris Hunt, the under sheriff, a manager of a division, to run without leave of office, a leave of his employment? It's a conflict of interest and it really needs to be investigated. Now, as you all know, I'm asking for people to run for office for water board, county ambulance board, fire protections, uh, and county coun- or, um, city councils, that election filing ends on Tuesday, uh, December 27th. Please contact me for more information. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you.
That's the final speaker.
Uh, next item would be oral report from the county executive. Uh, Mr. Elman was unable to, um, be here tonight due to a personal situation. But I manage, uh, I understand Amanda Brown is here on his behalf and is going to make a tip presentation for us.
Amanda Brower.
Brower. I'm sorry. I wrote that wrong. Excuse me.
No, you're fine. Yes, it's up. It's going to be on the screen. Okay. I wouldn't say I'm here on his behalf, but I'm happy to present to you guys tonight. Okay. All right. So, um, you guys have the tip, um, bill on your agenda tonight, and I think you should have received in your packets this great book. Yay. Brought it with you and everything. Um, so there's some great information in there about some of the stuff that's going on in roads and traffic and that we're trying to do with the transportation sales tax. Um, as we kind of need to start maintaining more of the infrastructure that we've built along with building new infrastructure, um, we're looking a lot at safety and bike ped and traffic flow and just trying to do as much, um, innovative and get in as much federal funds as we possibly can. So, um, a lot of, a lot of hard work going on. A lot of it's in there. I'm going to keep this very brief. I don't want to take any more time than we need. So feel free to jump in and ask questions if you need, but otherwise, I'm going to go fairly quickly. So, um, I want to first thank the road board members. This is them on the screen. Um, they are an excellent group, so committed and have spent a lot of time this year working through, um, some issues with inflation and all the things going on with transportation projects. So greatly appreciated group. Um, the priorities of the transportation sales tax as identified in the charter are new arterial roads and improvement to existing arterials, congestion mitigation and safety, and economic development enhancement projects. That's, um, public road improvements only and economic development. Um, so this year, in addition to new projects, we had to do a lot of, um, deal with a lot of rollover and inflation because there's just, the construction economy is really tough right now. Um, a lot of our projects are coming in with very high bids. The contractors are busy. We have, um, just a lot of things happening. So we actually have 125 million in funding for projects in '23 due to, um, 75 million of rollover and then, um, additional funds for six projects of over $9 million as well as we have a lot of county and roads and traffic projects with federal funds. So we'll be expecting 18 million in reimbursement on top of the 35 million that we'll get from sales tax funds this year. So it all does balance out, I promise. Um, okay. So for new projects, um, we had 30 project applications this year requesting $30 million in county funding for about 59 million in project costs. The road board recommended approval of 18 applications, um, which totaled 13.4 million in county funding and had over 15 million in federal funds and 1.3 million in other funds, as well as 4.1 million in sponsor funds, which is the cities and, um, anyone else sponsoring a project. So that is $34.4 million in total project cost with only 39% coming from the county. So you can see that most projects had a lot of other funds, and that's, um, the ones we were most likely to approve. So the recommended new projects, just very quickly, we have several new roads. A lot of these are designed and right away only, so we can try to get more concrete, uh, estimates with some more design done. Usually, it's pretty much a kind of rough idea of what you think it'll cost. And again, with all these inflation issues, not knowing what's going to happen in the next year or two, a lot of the cities kind of wanted to go with, um, getting some design work done first. So these two are County Highway Interstate Drive Extension to T and David Holkle Parkway Phase 5, which is at 61, um, to Piney in Wentzville or around Wentzville north. Um, new road, City of Lake St. Louis, uh, Lake St. Louis Boulevard Phase 1, which is south of 64. Uh, City of St. Charles, Frenchtown Great Streets Main Street Extension, again, design only. Um, new roads and condition, we had the Terra Lane realignment, which is pulling Terra Lane away from I-70 at Bryan Road, um, in the City of O'Fallon, as well as the Deer Road Extension and the Deer Road Reconstruction in O'Fallon. The extension is within the Harvest Development at Hopewell and will be, um, partially funded by the developer and constructed by them. County Highway also had some condition projects that also have federal funds already committed. Hepperman Road Phase 2 and Hopewell Road. And City of Darden Prairie has Town Square Avenue, which again, has federal funds committed, and South Hanley Road, design only, um, to try to improve that design to get federal funds. City of St. Charles, Frenchtown Great Streets North Second Street, um, can, condition, has, I think, 4 million in federal funds. So that was a big one. Um, they're only getting 960,000 from the county for a $7.8 million project. And Regency Parkway also had a, uh, very large chunk of federal funds. Uh, St. Peters has Barkwood Trail Drive Reconstruction and Young Station Road Resurfacing. Again, both have federal funds. And City of Wentzville has a, uh, new signal at Pierce Boulevard and Northland Avenue, also with federal funds. And Wilmer Road reimpro- improvement, um, as a safety project, design only. So we, again, we can get a, a better estimate. And finally, City of St. Peters has Mexico Road Bridge Rehabilitation, um, which will also include a 10-foot shared use path along the roadway and widening. Um, and they had federal funds for that. And that is everything. Are there any questions?
That was fast.
That was really fast.
Very ambitious.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes, always.
No questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Anything else from the executive office?
No, Madam Chairwoman.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda would be the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is passed. Uh, next would be resolution 22 point, uh, excuse me, dash 15.
Resolution number 22 dash 15, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, financial assistance center state, state ARPA grant programs for subaward of federal financial assistance provided to the state of Missouri by the U.S. Department of the Treasury pursuant to section 602B of the Social Security Act as added by section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, but you read the resolution and then call the question.
Resolution number 22 dash 15, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, financial assistance center state ARPA grant programs for subaward of federal financial assistance provided to the state of Missouri by the U.S. Department of the Treasury pursuant to section 602B of the Social Security Act as added by section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
And the resolution is passed. Resolution 22 dash 16.
Resolution number 22 dash 16, sponsored by Joe Brazel, Mike Ehlum, Dave Hammond, Terry Hollander, John White. A resolution supporting the county executive planned implementation and maintenance of the new compensation plan starting with the 2023 fiscal year.
Um, any comments or discussion?
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
As this last meeting, I, I did request that this be put in ordinance form. However, um, I agree that, I mean, I agreed to the compromise with the executive team and other council members, so I am grateful of that. I think it's important that we had, uh, had this in writing so it could be understood. And that's, uh, I think all the employees wanted is to be able to understand what the intent was. I think in the future, we should consider putting it more in ordinance form. So, uh, it's understood that this is what they're contracting to work with us for, and this is what they're going to be paid. Um, I don't, I don't agree with the fact that it's, it's discretionary and it's a variable. I think it should be solid. Like any contract you have with people in business, you contract what you're going to make, what your bonuses are, et cetera. Every employee in this county should know exactly what their layout is for their future and not, um, not just assume it may be this way or that way. So, but I do appreciate the compromises. So I, I end with that, that Joanne and Steve and you guys putting this together and the council, I do agree with, I, I'm thankful that we, uh, could come to terms and I will support the budget.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to make a comment because you, you did make a very important point. This is a resolution. It is not an ordinance. It does not have the power of law. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we are not the federal government. We don't have deficit spending. We have to budget, we have to balance our budget every year. And again, there is some concern about what will happen in the future with respect of revenues. We've been in a really good time the last couple of years, and I hope that that goes on. But there is no, um, guarantee as to how much money is going to come in. There is no guarantee that any future council or any future, uh, county executive would abide by this. So that's why having it in a resolution is the proper form rather than having it, um, as, um, as a bill. And I just want to make sure that people do understand that there are certain limitations that have to be met. I, I do think that the final form of the resolution is helpful, but I wish that people just understand it and make sure they, they know that it's subject to revenues. Um, and the budget is something that comes up annually and is voted on by the council members. So that's my comment. Any other comments?
Yes. I, I would also support an ordinance that would, uh, set this in concrete. I think that, uh, if it comes, if we do have a bad year, there's other places we can draw money from and still maintain the most important resource we have, which is our employees. So we'll continue to work on that. At least I will.
There are no other comments, then please, uh, read the ordinance.
Resolution number 22 dash 16, a resolution supporting the county executive planned implementation and maintenance of the new compensation plan starting with the 2023 fiscal year. Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
And the resolution is approved. Um, we have an emergency bill, number 5131 is next on the agenda.
Emergency bill number 5131, requested by Joe Brazel and Dave Hammond, sponsored by Joe Brazel and Dave Hammond. An or, emergency ordinance extending the duration within which a conditional use permit must be in place and enacted use before it is considered null and void for all permits set to expire during the current 487-day extension period from the end of the declared emergency, August 31st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023.
Um, is there any discussion?
Uh, this is a constituent we've been working with that's, uh, has a, got a CUP passed by this council. And, uh, me and, uh, me and Mike and Mike Herbert and Robert met him out there trying to work with him to get things moving along quicker. The equipment that's associated with it and the things that they're doing, the building is built. The building's built, only roof has windows in it, but, uh, they don't have the equipment. So the contract, the, the CUP expired at the end of this month, December, and, uh, seemed like it would have made no sense to let it expire. We would have to go through the plant zoning and everything already again when the building's already built and they're moving forward with it. It's just a matter of getting this equipment and getting things rolling. They ordered a Butler's barn. It's a big, big building, but it was a Butler barn and, uh, I think it was a Butler barn. Is that right, Nick? Nick's the architect. What is it?
A Morton.
A Morton building. And it just was delay after delay. And so that's why we're, we're, we're extending it. We then realized, so me and Mike and Robert went out there that it was going to be a, uh, we were hoping that it would be operational, but it's just not because the stuff's not coming in. So we just have to extend it to, we're giving them six, one months, I guess is what it is.
Um, when I saw this bill was proposed, it was just sponsored by Mr. Brazel, didn't have a second. So I was curious about why we were doing an emergency bill without even having a second sponsor. So I looked into it and refreshed my recollection and the history of this in abbreviated form is that in November of 2018, that's four years ago, this conditional use permit was, was approved. Um, it was recommended to be approved by planning and zoning. I think there were about 13 special conditions. The council did vote for it unanimously despite the fact that there were many concerns, uh, oppositions, letters against this. This is a project out on, I think it's called Benny Road. It's an agricultural district and a lot of the neighbors had a lot of concerns about this. So then, in 2021, on November 29th, I think of '21, there was an extension of conditional use permits to give, um, those an additional 270 days, which went to, I'm sure, I can't remember exactly. It went, I think it went from, um, August to November of '21. And then there was another extension that was granted in May of, uh, this year. It extended the 270 days from the previous extension to be a total of 487 days. Uh, so this one then would run, no, so this, the emergency bill extends it again to June the 3rd of 2023. So I checked to see, because when I read this bill, it gave all of these reasons why, uh, we needed this emergency extension. I checked into it and there's only one project. This particular bill is intended to help one project. Um, apparently there were two others that hadn't been done, but when I checked. but when I checked on it, I found out that they had withdrawn their application and weren't going to proceed with it. So basically, this is a bill to help one person who has had four years within which to complete this project. It still hasn't been done. And from what I've been told, given another six months would be very difficult to complete the project. So I think we're looking at more extensions. This appears to be a special interest bill, and so I'm voting against it.
If you all want, you know, I understand everything you're saying, Nancy. I get it. It has been a long time. I get it. I just don't know, in this instance, it doesn't, it's, it's, it's fallen into our lap where we are today. So since the building is built, it seems like it's going to be a lot of wasted time and energy for this to have to go back to the county, plan and zoning, go back to the council when the building's already built, when we know that this individual's doing it. To me, that's a lot of wasted effort. If we vote no for it at that point, then we're going to tear this facility down. I mean, so at what point, I get what you're saying. I completely get it. But to me, in some instances, you just have to work with people. The architect's here. I, I told him to be here in case there were questions. He could be more specific if anybody wants to inquire. He can explain there were some changes with the parking lot, changes with this, changes with that. I don't know all the reasons. All I'm doing is trying to help the constituent get to where he needs to be because otherwise, we're going to be in a bad spot if we, if it doesn't happen. We got to go through all this stuff again. And I just think that that would be fruitless.
Well, I don't know if we're going to be in a bad spot, but certainly the applicant, if they wanted to complete this, would have to start over, I assume. But it was, I was under the impression that the building is there, is a metal building, and that did not even comply with the original plans, which were extremely elaborate. And I think that basically little of anything has actually been done. So, I mean, obviously, everybody can vote the way they want, but I think it's improper to keep extending something for one particular person. The other thing I would point out is that none of the people who opposed it originally have had notice to come back and tell us what they think about the fact that this thing has dragged on for four years. So that's all I wanted to say.
Nancy? Could we have Mike Herbert come up? Just a couple of questions about these extensions. My first question is that, you know, normally with CUPs, there's not extensions, but this one has already had two or three. Is that correct?
It's had two.
Two. And who issues those extensions?
It was, at the time, there were three, three CUPs that met the criteria that applied, that applied to it. So the extensions allowed all three to be extended.
Be extended.
And now, at this point, the two, I think it was mentioned, there were two, two of the CUPs have told us they're not going forward. So technically, the, I think the way it's worded, those CUPs could still be extended. It's, so it applies to any of them that are still.
Any, any of the three?
Yeah, those three.
In, in general, how many times are CUPs extended? I mean, I, this is something that I don't believe we've come across. Again, because it's, it's not something comes, becomes before us.
No, I think the COVID crisis situation and the supply chain created an unusual circumstance in the last couple of years. That, that was the reasoning for the, the initial extensions. I believe this applicant did mention supply chain as part of their, their issue, as part of that. So, but, you know, that's potentially a continuing problem for people.
Mike, how far along is the building?
The building is roughed out. It's completed on the exterior. It needs to have, obviously, the roughing still done on the inside. There's no walls. There is no plumbing. The electricity's not all set up yet, but it's, it's close. The windows are in. The exterior, for the most part, is done. They were still working on some stone cladding to be put around the periphery. But other than that, it's, it's pretty close. In fact, as Joe mentioned, we were hopeful that they would be able to have it open by, by December thirty-first and operating.
Somebody from your office, and I'm, I'm not going to say who was, told me that it was very little chance that this would be finished by June third. But that was just what I was told.
It's, yeah, it's continuing struggles. Yeah, who knows?
Okay.
Question, just one last question. If, if we vote for this and June thirtieth rolls around, does it come back to us for another extension or not?
The, the only reason it's before you now is because council member made, made that, brought it forward. So if it's brought forward again, then that would be yes. But if not, no, it would, it would die.
I, I would ask the council to approve this last extension till June thirtieth. And if, if they don't get it completed, then they're going to have to start all over again. That's the only reason I put my name on there, because it is pretty close to being completed, and it would just, just seem like it would create a lot more work for staff and everybody else to run it through another conditional use permit.
Nancy? So, Mike, let's say that this didn't get approved. What happens with what they built to this point?
So the building itself could be utilized as an accessory building for purpose of storage in an agricultural district. They would, they would be able to at least utilize the building in that fashion. They would not be able to utilize it in a commercial sense of what the intent of the CUP is.
So if, if this expires at the end of the year, they would have to come back to planning and zoning, ask for it all over again? But they would, they would still be able to use the building the way it is, just not for the purpose that it was, it was given?
They, they would need to do some other finish work to make it work. I mean, it's, it's, it's a framed building right at this point. It's not finished. But yes, they could do something with it to utilize the building in, in some fashion within the uses permitted by the agricultural district.
Does the framing comply with how the CUP was written? Like, is the building built the way that it was supposed to be built according to the CUP?
No, no. It, it, it's metal for the most part, and there's a condition in the CUP that says no metal should be used. Now, part of the process here is that building was scaled down from the original plan, and the original plan is still envisioned by the applicant. So the original, the, the buildings that will be built in the future phases will have to comply with all that. This building would just become an accessory building at that point. It's not the main building, is what, what they're telling us.
So we're, we're looking at extending a CUP for a building that does not comply with the CUP that we passed before. But if we do pass this, they're going to have six months to finish building a building that is a metal building, but it's not supposed to be a metal building. So how is it going to comply with the CUP that it's fulfilling if it's a metal building and the metal building was not approved in the original CUP?
So the way we're looking at this, this would be a phased project. So this is the first phase. The first phase would be this building used for temporary use so that they can meet that deadline. That was the intent. And so that, but then they would build this, the, the next building in the next phase, that would actually be the building for the purpose of the CUP. This building would become an accessory building, not part of, not requirement of the CUP conditions.
So that being said, wouldn't they have to come back to planning and zoning and ask for this other building to be built? Because they're not going to have it built by June thirtieth.
The only thing they're doing, well, that's.
I mean, the, the second building that you're talking about in phase, does the CUP give them phases that they can go build as many buildings as they want to comply with the CUP?
The CUP, at the time it was approved, had a concept plan. The concept plan showed a large building in the one location. What they're now doing is breaking that up. They're basically amending that concept plan. They're changing the concept plan.
And there's no deadline for that? I mean, they could be doing this ten, fifteen years?
The deadline's the CUP deadline, which has been extended twice.
So now, it, with this, it would be June thirtieth?
Correct.
And they'd have to do everything that was in the concept, or I'll start all over again? Or go back and get new approval?
They, they would be, the, the project, the phases, the concept plan would have to be submitted to us with the, the new layout if they're changing that setup by June thirtieth. But if, as long as they are operating in some capacity within there, we, we would keep that, we would allow that. Because they're operating at the use. The concept plan has, has been, been varied from.
Help me, help, sorry, but help me understand. How can an applicant get approved for a CUP, which is specific with conditions? And I believe this one had thirteen different conditions that were on it. How can they amend a concept plan outside of what was approved without coming back and asking for further approval on the original concept plan that was approved? Because if, if you changed it, in effect, you, you changed what was approved. So therefore, the approval that is currently pending on that project, I, I mean, I got a communications degree, so work with me. But that, that doesn't seem that would be allowable for anyone else.
It actually happens quite often that the concept plan is not adhered to, to the specific letter that it goes through the process. There's things that happen in, during it that impact the size of a building or the location, or in some cases, the number.
But building materials?
But doesn't it still have the same deadline, though?
Again, it does, as long as it's not extended.
But even if it's extended, they would have to have the concept built up by June thirtieth, wouldn't they?
The, the, the time period of the CUP says it has to be in place and operation. The concept plan is a concept. It is not a specific, it's, it's an idea. What is envisioned in the CUP. You remember years ago, conditional use permits didn't even have a plan. They would submit the idea, but we wouldn't have any idea what it looked like. So we, we put that into the letter to require a concept plan to at least give us an idea of what it's going to look like. It doesn't mean it's going to be to the letter of the law that that's what that is. The concept plan can be changed, can vary. And, and it happens.
But the completion date doesn't get changed?
No. Again, that's with regard to the use of the actual CUP itself, the use.
Right. Okay.
Let's call the question.
I have nothing. I believe Mr. White does.
Please read the title and. Oh, I'm sorry. Who did I, who did I miss?
I believe John had a question.
You know, sometimes I think county government is just too rigid. And we're supposed to be here to help people.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't see a problem with this. Give the guy another chance. I mean, he's going to do something that's going to bring revenue into the county. And why do we have to be so rigid? Just let it go with the flow, let him get it done.
But don't you think the people who objected to it would have an opportunity to come back and, and question what's going on? So maybe they should, maybe every time you extend it, they, they get to come back and put in their two cents worth again? Just saying.
Well, they did the first time, and we had still got it approved, so I don't see where that's relevant.
Well, that was supposed to be done three years ago. Anyway, okay, I'm done. Let's, let's read the title and call the roll.
Emergency bill number five-one-three-one. An emergency ordinance extending the duration within which a conditional use permit must be in place and enacted use before it is considered null and void for all permits set to expire during the current four-hundred-and-eighty-seven-day extension period from the end of the declared emergency August thirty-first, 2021 through June thirtieth, 2023. Councilman, Councilwoman Schneider?
No.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin? Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
No.
Since this is an emergency bill, I think it required five yes votes?
No, it just needs four.
Four, okay. All right, very good. All right, thank you.
It passes.
Bills for final passage. Bill number five-one-two-two.
Bill number five-one-two-two. An ordinance amending the 2022 budget adopted as ordinance 21-096 as amended by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items in the general fund budgets of the Department of Facilities Management, Department of Public Health, Indigent Program, Department of Police Administrative Services, Department of Sheriff, non-departmental, the Road and Bridge Fund, the Transportation Fund, the Assessment Fund, the Recorders Fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund, the Family Services and Justice Fund, the Family Arena Fund, and the Regional Medical Examiner Fund, and providing related supplemental appropriations to the budget of the Election Authority Fund, the Emergency Communications Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, the Self-Insurance Fund, the General Fund, the Airport Fund, the Regional Medical Examiner Fund, and the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Is there a motion to amend the bill?
I'd make a motion to amend Bill 5122 and replace it with substitute Bill 5122, but only if Claire reads the entire thing over again.
Is there a sec, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended motion is now on the table. Please read the title and call the roll.
Substitute bill number five-one, five-one-two-two. An ordinance amending the 2022 budget adopted as ordinance 21-096 as amended by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items in the general fund budgets of the Department of Collector of Revenue, Department of Facilities Management, Department of Public Health, Indigent Program, Department of Police Administrative Services, Department of Sheriff, non-departmental, the Road and Bridge Fund, the Transportation Fund, the Assessment Fund, the Recorders Fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund, the Family Services and Justice Fund, the Family Arena Fund, and the Regional Medical Examiner Fund, and providing related supplemental appropriations to the budgets of the Election Authority Fund, the Emergency Communications Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, the Self-Insurance Fund, the General Fund, the Airport Fund, the Regional Medical Examiner Fund, and the Corona virus Relief Fund. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin? Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes. The bill passes. Bill number five-one-two-four.
Bill number five-one-two-four requested by Mike Herbert, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E Single Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District per application RZ 22-16.
Is there any discussion? Please read the title and call the roll.
Bill number five-one-two-four. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E Single Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District per application RZ 22-16. Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin? Councilman Brazel? Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
I believe bill number, oh, excuse me, the bill passes. Bill number five-one-two-five has been removed, is, is tabled, I'm sorry, at the request of the applicant. Apparently, there's some confusion about whether they're on Flint Hill or not.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we table Bill number five-one-two-five.
Second.
We have a second, a third, a fourth, and a fifth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That bill will be tabled. Bill number five-one-two-six.
Bill number five-one-two-six requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Council as a whole. An ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2023 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri.
Is there any discussion? We've had two work sessions. We've had public testimony, so I think we're ready to vote. Please read the title and call the roll.
Bill number five-one-two-six. An ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2023 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin? Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
We're in business for another year. That's good to know. Next bill is five-one-two-seven.
Bill number five-one-two-seven requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Council as a whole. An ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2025 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Any discussion? Thank you, Amanda, for your concise information. Please read the title and call the roll.
Bill number five-one-two-seven. An ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2025 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements. Councilman Cronin? Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
That bill will be tabled. Bill Number 5126.
Bill Number 5126, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Council as a whole, an ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2023 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri.
Is there any discussion? We've had two work sessions, we've had public testimony, so I think we're ready to vote. Please read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 5126, an ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2023 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes. The bill passes. Bill Number 5129.
Bill Number 5129, requested by Samantha Shadrack, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance amending Sections 115.075, 115.130, 115.210, 115.220, 115.240, 115.555, 115.600, 115.670, 115.705, 115.721, 115.722, 115.830, and 115.840 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, and enacting new Sections 115.706, 115.707, and 115.708, repealing and replacing Sections 115.710 and 115.720, and deleting all Section 115.725, OSCCMO, all concerning the Personnel Administration Plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Is there any discussion? I guess you need to read it again and call the roll.
Bill Number 5129. An ordinance amending Sections 115.1075, 115.130, 115.210, 115.220, 115.240, 115.550, 115.600, 115.670, 115.705, 115.721, 115.722, 115.830, and 115.840 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, and enacting new Sections 115.706, 115.707, and 115.708, replacing and repealing Sections 115.710 and 115.720, and deleting all Section 115.725, OSCCMO, all concerning the Personnel Administration Plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Good job.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes. The bill passes. Final bill up for passage is 5130.
Bill Number 5130, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services.
That's it?
That's it.
There's no point zero?
Is there any discussion? Please read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 5130, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
No.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes. The bill passes. There are two bills for introduction. The first is 5132.
Bill Number 5133.
5132?
Was that up top? Bill Number 5132, requested by Kurt Friss, sponsored by Council as a whole. An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Emergency Communications Association of St. Charles, Incorporated, to provide communications services to St. Charles County Regional Emergency Management during disasters, emergency, and training and testing exercises.
Is there any discussion or questions concerning the bill? The last bill for introduction, then, is 5133.
Bill Number 5133, an ordinance providing for the authorization of a sales tax in an amount of 3% on retail sales of adult-use recreational marijuana to be placed on the April 4th, 2023 ballot for a vote of the people.
Is there any discussion or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Do you want to add on this bill? This goes to a vote? Is that what happens?
It'll go to the voters.
So, the criteria of, how much funds do we have an estimate on? What kind of generation of funds do we have?
We have no idea what legalized recreational or adult use, as they refer to it, because this does not apply to the medical side. This only applies to adult use, which is how they refer to recreational marijuana in Amendment 3 to the Constitution. Nobody has any idea what it's going to generate.
So, if there's discussion on where the funds go, at what point? Does that happen after the bill passes, or does that need to be written into the ordinance before it's voted on by council members? Like, for say, let's say, generating funds?
We don't vote on it.
I'm sorry?
The public?
No, no, we're voting on to put it on the ballot.
The wording on the ballot?
Yeah, so do we have to write into?
There are uses in the Constitution that it's available for. All of it will be in a separate fund, unless Bob tells me otherwise, but that's normally how we do it, and then we would have to account in the budget for areas that you're allowed to spend it on. Enforcement, public health, you know.
That criteria is by the state legislator, is that what you mean?
It's in the Missouri Constitution.
It's in the Amendment that was passed.
Remember, Amendment 3 went on by initiative petition, and in this section, it says what you can spend it for.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Any other comments?
One last comment. Could you please send me an email on what that criteria is, please?
Do you want the whole thing, or do you just want the section on?
Just a condensed version?
Okay. Absolutely.
And then, just to clarify, the amount, the 3%, that was also included in the Amendment, the constitutional amendment?
Yes.
Okay. And I understand that some other governments in the area are considering doing the same thing.
Right. It would have to, the deadline to be on the April ballot is the 24th of January.
Okay.
So, it has to be initiated now in order to make most jurisdictions January deadlines.
All right. And so, both of these bills will be voted on the next meeting, and what's the date of that?
9th of January.
The 9th of January. Okay. Okay. Is there any action on tabled bills? Hearing none. Announcements and miscellaneous? Mr. White, this is sadly your last meeting with the council. Did you wish to make an announcement?
Yeah, you know, during the years, I never spoke a lot and had a lot of frivolous conversation during the meetings because I didn't want to balloon up the minutes, but I like to take the time to have some not-so-frivolous conversations. When I first came to the county council, I was pleased to find that the county employees were bright, educated, and dedicated as citizens of this county, all the department heads, the chairmans, and everybody was just top-notch in the county, and that holds through today. So, I appreciate the time that I got to work with you, and I congratulate you, and I hope you have a bright future, making the county great. Next, I want to talk about some people that really made my job so easy on the county council, and that was Carol Miller, Claire Feldman, and especially Donna Voe. You really made things go very easily for me and helped me do a lot of things that I didn't know how to do and helped the citizens of the county and my district. So, I really do appreciate that. Next, I want to tell the council members previous, like Bob, and the council members I'm sitting with here, it's been a real pleasure sitting on this dais with you. I just think that you've done such a good job forging this county forward and making it as what it is today. And I also was pleased to be able to work with two great county executives, Joel Artworth, who was the right man in the right place, and really brought this sleepy bedroom community to a community where people really wanted to live and work and thrive. And Steve Elman picked up the ball and carried it right through and carried us through some really difficult times. So, it was a pleasure working with those two great gentlemen. And I want to thank the citizens of my district for voting for me all these years. It was a pleasure to serve you and represent you. And you might think this is kind of odd, but I'd like to thank the people that did not vote for me this year. At my age, it made me realize at my age that there's more to life than public service. And the gentleman that made that all possible was sitting right out here, and I'd like to ask him to come forward. Tim Baker, I'd like to come down and shake your hand.
Well, thank you. You left some big shoes to fill, Joe. Thank you.
The county's in good shape, Lieutenant Brennan.
Thank you.
He ran a good campaign, honest campaign, and...
Well, you're a friend, first and foremost, and running against a friend was not easy. But, like I said, you left some big shoes to fill. I hope I fill them. I look forward to working with Claire, Donna, and the members, the rest of the members of the board, and of course, the administrative staff. So, and please don't be a stranger.
All right. That's a lot to you. Go back and sit down, because you've got a few more days to go.
Thank you.
Keep going, John.
Now, I'd like to go into something that is totally frivolous and has nothing to do with this council or the county. I'm out of a job now, so I've got to find some extra revenue. So, friends, have no fear. The John White bobblehead. Madam Chair, you know, people have come to me and said, "We're really sorry you're going to be gone, because we can't come up there and give you our comments, our concerns, and our compliments." But with this JW bobblehead doll, you can do it any time of the day, and just for $19.98, this could be yours. And you're going to come to love this bobblehead, because this bobblehead is made here, right in Missouri, with the very best materials, and I'm so proud to present this to you. It's an exact replica of me. If you don't blame me, just look. Now, for those who come almost every meeting and like to give their, you know, their concerns and their comments and their compliments, although there hasn't been that many compliments, but this is meant for them. Just imagine, for just $19.98, this adorable, adorable bobblehead could be yours, and you could use it in the privacy of your home, anytime, anyplace. But wait, there is more. If you buy, if you order your bobblehead right now, in the next 15 minutes, you'll get this adorable, adorable JWW bobblehead absolutely free. Just go to www.com/jw, and you can order your bobblehead just for $19.98. Now, those that have come here all the time, you know, some people just like to come constantly and kind of pontipicate, well, this is especially for them. Just imagine, you could have this adorable JWW bobblehead doll in your home, in your car, anytime, and you can pontipicate, pontipicate, anytime you want. And I absolutely agree that this JWW bobblehead is going to agree with you every time. Let me prove it. JW, am I lying to the folks? No? Am I telling the truth? See, I guarantee it. I doubt you can't go wrong. Order your bobblehead today. Folks, I want to thank you and God bless.
Are there any other announcements?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Are we going to wish everybody Merry Christmas and see you next year, too?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The meeting is adjourned.[1792.83]